Pushing buttons again already.
I am. I'm here with a smile and I'm glad I'm back. I love you guys.
All right.
Let's see who I do.
Seven o'clock, September 11th, 2018, planning board meeting. We are recording it. If anybody in the audience is recording it, that's fine. You just need to let us know. Okay? Seven o'clock PM, Town Planners Report. Alan.
This is our last meeting. I met with Mr. and Mrs. Lynch, the owners of the Skybox. They are the sole owners. They purchased it from Randy Raddell's. And I did see them, but they're looking to construct an interior kitchen and restaurant within the side of their unit. It's a pre-existing non-conforming, but by them staying inside, they can do that. But still, it's a change of use going from a bar to a restaurant. So they're in for a special permit later on tonight. Also, Mr. Dell Torrey from Hudson Drive, who has the Paken Greenhouses, he's in tonight for a special permit to grow and manufacture marijuana. We also have reviewed plans on 34 Granville Road where they're proposing for an estate lot, as well as a common driveway and a stormwater permit. The selectmen the other night approved the road renamed for the, at the old South Country Club, to Sawgrass Lane. And so they're going to be fixed, and their 20-day appeal period is up. So they'll be actually giving this mylar's to sign for filing. And then more recently, I met with the Baker family, which are located on Wolf Palmer Road in the R-40 zone. And they were interested in putting up a large format solar farm, which is not allowed in a residential zone. And they, my glasses are fogging up. And they wanted to know if they could file an appeal to do that. I told them realistically, it's new bylaw. I don't see them here either tonight. And I contacted Mr. Moglen and explained to Doug about all the particulars. And he agreed that they shouldn't be allowed to do it, but they were going to come in and ask anyway. And that's it. Someone must be really giving it in here.
It is. It is.
You don't have minutes, eh?
We do have minutes from the 10th.
Why don't we do those? Everybody look at the July 10th minutes. And submit any changes you wish to have submitted.
I want to change my name.
Don't everybody speak at once. You want to change your name to Doug?
I want to be Don again.
Do I hear a motion to approve the July 10th minutes?
Still moved.
Seconds.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstaining? Okay.
When you first go, you can disconnect them all if you want, so you keep his name. Because you don't say their name.
Thank you.
So it's important that you look that. The only time they say his name is when you're in the role.
Um, AG?
You talked to Michelle?
Right. I talked to the town clerk. She's checked with the AG and the marijuana. It won't be effective until September 28th. It wasn't filed right after the meeting. There was a bunch of paperwork. A lot of paperwork.
So they have until September 28th to review it?
Yes.
So anything we did tonight would have to be conditional?
Yeah, they can apply at their own risk and then...
Well, we can't grant that.
You can't grant anything yet. No.
Yeah, we can't. We've got to continue it.
You wouldn't anyway.
Well, actually, tonight, when we get to that point, the one that's on the agenda for a public hearing, they've asked for a continuance.
Oh, yeah, makes it easier.
And the other one, the possession of informal.
Okay. All right. 7:10, public comments. Anybody in the audience have anything to bring to the planning board's attention that isn't on the agenda tonight? 7:11 PM, it is close enough. We have 627 College Highway Sign Review. You want to give me the basics?
Right, what it is, it's a sign to Ryan's Corner, which is right opposite IBS on the south side. And there's a rehab center that has moved into there. And they would like to install a sign on the wall. They're in the College Highway, so they are allowed a maximum of 75 square feet. There is another one that was approved by Montevale Dental, a bit similar to that nature.
Okay. And they don't have any other, other than the one you just mentioned? That's the only other existing wall sign? They have a sign by the street? Nothing?
Yes, they do have that. Which says Ryan's Corner and it says what's in each one, like on a little placard.
But nothing else on the wall?
No, right now, they just have a little sandwich sign temporarily because they did open.
And what do they? How big is it?
Twenty-one.
Oh, twenty-one, okay. Yeah, there we go. All right. Pass it down. Anybody else to see it? Anything else we need to know about?
No.
So they haven't exceeded what they're allowed for the wall?
If they take the whole facade of the whole place, they're well beneath it also.
The applicant is the property owner?
Yeah, yes.
All right. So they understand they can only put so many signs up there for certain things? It's still 50 feet, eh?
No, it could be, it can be up to...
Or is it more college highways?
Yes, on a wall sign, it can be 75 square feet or 10% of the area of the facade. For a wall sign only. For a standalone, it's 50. Fifty-six. No, standalone sign.
But is College Highway still have the number?
They're allowed one per business.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion for a positive recommendation with a sign at 627 College Highway.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstaining? Let's do the pen again.
You can just hold on to it.
Just keep it within reach.
No, or they can abstain, which means, I don't know. Certain things, everything they need at least three guesses, some things they need. But he knows all those rules. It's all on you.
Oh, he's done a sabbatical for a month. Went out past two kids. Yeah, two daughters.
His joke on the board is that's third base. And anything that gets signed, it gets down there. She better not take it home. She used to bring it down. It's happened. It'll end up with cramps all over. Every once in a while, somebody keeps something.
How many grades did you get?
Oh, yeah. Do you want paper to take notes?
No.
You've got to take some.
She did.
Good point. But you want to just do it on like...
Yes.
I heard your warning about people taking stuff somewhere. Out of the way now.
Okay, so next.
All right. Is that all set? Or no? Accelerate.
It's already done.
Perfect.
Yep.
All right.
So I put something on top of this, but I do believe these still need to open.
34 Granville Road Public Hearing on a Special Permit Application for an Estate Lot and Common Driveway. Should I open it? I can't remember the rules.
I think you have to, otherwise we have to repost it.
Oh, good point. Yeah, well, it puts them on the clock.
No one's here?
Rob knows that.
We have a letter, we have a letter requesting a continuance.
All right, so. Notice of public hearing Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, 7:15 PM in the land use hearing room, 454 College Highway. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of MGL Chapter 48, Section 11 that the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 11th at 7:15 PM in the land use hearing room, Town Hall, 454 College Highway, on an application by Vitaly Kostenko for special permits and site plan approval for property located at 34 Granville Road, zoned as residential 40, R-40 Zone. The property is shown on current assessors map 88, parcel 70. The applicant proposes to construct two single-family homes. One will be an estate lot, which includes a common driveway to be shared by another single-family home in accordance with the Code of Southwick Zoning Bylaws, Chapter 185, Sections 9, 10, 12, 21, and 30.1. A copy of the application and the plans may be inspected at the planning board office or the town clerk's office during regular office hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Michael Doherty, Chairperson, Southwick Planning Board. We have a letter from Arlevak Associates dated today. Dear Board Members, on behalf of the applicant, Vitaly Kostenko, our office is hereby herein requesting a continuance for the special permit and that this matter be placed on the next planning board meeting date to allow for plan revisions and response to town comments. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please feel free to contact our office at your convenience.
Does she ever have anything already on there?
No.
Okay. Okay, so the next meeting is September 25th. But one thing we should maybe mention is this stormwater thing. Do you think we need to advertise for it?
Right. After it was initially sent to us, for the estate lot and the common driveway, we advertised it the two times required. They have then come in with a stormwater permit.
Application.
Application. And they're asking for a waiver, but we've received a lot of comments from all the other departments. They're saying that they are exempt because it's a single family, but really, in this case, it's two houses. But they're also disturbing three and a half acres of land. And all the water is coming down towards Granville Road. So the PPW wants additional drainage put in. I told them they missed the deadline for tonight's meeting. And they said they understood that and to file it for the next meeting. But the next meeting would be in two weeks. We have to advertise it.
Twice?
Twice.
Yeah, would it still, is it a separate, could it fall under the same hearing? Now it's just additional information for this application?
It is a special permit.
You know what I mean, like?
Well, we could open and combine them if it goes more than one. Or we could just continue it at the next meeting.
Yeah, we just didn't know whether it needed to be advertised separately.
I think it has to. I mean, it's an application. It wasn't advertised, so it needs to be, it's a special permit, so it needs to be advertised.
Early October 5th, and one after September 25th?
October 2nd.
October 2nd?
Yes.
I'm assuming they paid the fees and whatever, so we have the money to...
Yeah, did they pay again?
Yes.
To advertise and all that good stuff.
So it would probably best to move this one to this at the same time.
Yeah, they asked you for a specific date of continuation?
They said the next one. But I guess my inclination is it sort of doesn't matter. And I'm betting that Rob only wants to do it once. So it's probably worth putting them both on for that first October date and...
Was that October 2nd?
Second.
October 2nd.
He can yell at me if he wants, but that seems to be the most logical. I mean, he's not going to be able to do anything until that stormwater is dealt with, so.
Because the comments that they've made on the estate lot basically talk about stormwater anyway.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like. That's probably what's why it's being continued. So what is it, October?
2nd.
October 2nd.
Does that give us enough time to?
Yeah, I have plenty of time to advertise for it then. It would be...
Be close though, huh?
No, it would be in the newspaper on October, I mean, on September 25th and September 18th. I just have to get it by Thursday.
It can't be 18th.
Okay, 18th and 25th, yeah. Okay, all right. So...
That's good.
And so it would sound just like, I would only list the one...
The stormwater.
The stormwater, just, yeah, because the others are already advertised.
Yeah, and you could probably just piggyback off that other advertisement and just change that. But we can do that if you want.
I'm in tomorrow. I will get it out and get it in paper. I got to look it up.
So, yeah, I would say do that and just let Rob know that that's what we did and why we did it.
What time, 7:15?
What are we thinking for the, I mean, what's the odds that he's coming in on October 2nd on this one?
We just go look. I think probably around 8:00.
Don't trip.
No.
Be careful. He's got a good plan. He's got it.
Yeah.
No, but it sounds like, it sounds like there's some issues with the stormwater stuff. So that's not necessarily a quick...
Yeah, decision.
Deal to modify that, but...
And he might have to put in a small basin or infiltration. They've been to conservation.
Yeah, sometimes those things take a few weeks to kind of play out, but, you know, I don't care. I just don't want to tie up the beginning of the meeting if we're not going to, we're just going to continue it.
Yeah.
Well, because we would take a break to 7:30.
Well, our 7:30 is off too, so that's why I'm not really worried about moving this thing too quickly because we've got to at least get closer to the 7:45.
Nothing scheduled as of yet.
That's what I always thought I needed out here.
So the 30th is my time?
That's worse.
So you have a motion to continue the second?
Yeah, so. Alan, what are you thinking as far as, you think he's going to get it in by the second?
I believe so, because most of the comments he has to address.
Pretty straightforward?
Yeah.
See, Jessica, you're on the...
All right, so.
Our importance cannot be understated.
Why don't we put it on for 7:15 on the second? If that's open?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing for 34 Granville Road to October 2nd at 7:15?
Still moved.
Second? Anybody?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstaining?
People are here for the 7:30.
That's continued though, right? Are we going to, do they have a request to continue it?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
There's a few people in there.
All right.
Got the 7:30.
So.
Yeah, we are leaving 7:30.
Well.
30.
It'll be cut.
7:45, people are here for that.
Yes, they are.
Oh, can I have 7:15 back?
You can.
Can I have the folder back?
Once it goes by, we're done. You can have it tomorrow morning.
Well, just to take it home. That's a hazard.
Push it down the stairs.
Nothing to sign, so we could.
It's 7:45 and it's informal.
Yeah, it's an informal discussion. We could do that.
It still has to open.
Yeah, all right. So what's?
7:30 you have to open.
You guys all got message where Ruth is, right?
We did. I've not.
Alan's following me.
Bottom of the stairs pushed by somebody.
No, 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 no. Alan was, Alan was going to push.
Um, do you have the 7:30? Nice.
Hello?
What time is your watch then?
I don't have a watch.
Yeah, his watch.
He's not allowed.
I got 7:20 on my watch.
You need to get a pocket watch.
We'll need to have, they might not come. So a public hearing, a public hearing is still... All the people that get letters in the mail.
All right. This is close enough. We're just continuing it. I'm not worried about that. 7:30, 27 Hudson Drive. Special permit application for marijuana growing, production, and wholesale facility, public hearing. Notice of public hearing Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, 7:30 PM in the land use hearing room, 454 College Highway. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of MGL Chapter 48, Section 11 that the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 11th, 2018 at 7:30 PM in the land use hearing room, Town Hall, 454 College Highway, on an application by Southwick Greenhouses, Inc. for special permits and site plan approval for property located at 27 Hudson Drive, zoned as industrial restricted. Property is shown on current assessors map 67, parcel 7. The applicant proposes to grow cannabis in the greenhouse and attached buildings. The use will be dedicated to cultivation, processing, and packaging for wholesale distribution in accordance with the Code of Southwick Zoning Bylaws, Chapter 185, Sections 9, 10, 19, 22, and 35.2. A copy of the application and the plans may be inspected at the planning board office or the town clerk's office during regular office hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Michael Doherty, Chairperson, Southwick Planning Board. We have a letter from Arlevak Associates dated September 11th, 2018.
His kids must have to open house too.
Someone check the Westfield out, school calendar. Dear Board Members, on behalf of the applicant, our office is herein requesting a continuance for the special permit at the above referenced site regarding proposed marijuana growing, production, and wholesale facility. We are requesting that this matter be placed on the next planning board meeting as the applicant is unavailable to attend tonight's meeting and represent the project. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please feel free to contact our office at your convenience. Sincerely, Arlevak Associates, Ryan Nelson.
I did have stuff in your folders, both the approved marijuana bylaw and something from Carl Steinhardt.
Yep.
If you're, if you want to, I'd like you to keep it so I don't have to keep making copies of it. So you could keep it in your folder, or you could just try to remember to bring it because we're going to be dealing with this for a while and it's not in your... You should put it in your bylaw until we get it in there.
Assuming it's approved.
Yeah, it may get tweaked.
Okay, do I hear a, what, sorry, what are we doing on September 25th?
It's the night you were bringing pizza, Mike.
Yeah. Pizza party?
Bringing pizza there that night, folks.
7:15 is open?
Yep.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to continue the public hearing for 27 Hudson Drive to September 25th at 7:15 PM?
So motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, abstaining?
Who did that? Marcus?
Okay.
Seconded.
Yeah, Marcus seconded.
David made the motion.
Which David?
David. Doug.
Oh, this is...
Doug. This, for information of the board, this checklist, the community outreach meeting is to be called by the applicant and it's their responsibility. The host community agreement right now, Doug Moglen has been designated from the select board along with Carl Steinhardt to work with the town council and the applicant in drafting the host community agreement. So that's another thing that is part of the process for the applicant. Plus, they have to apply for the, to the Cannabis Control Commission. They have to file a license application, which is important for them to do. I don't know if either one has done it, but it's useful.
I was notified today. Each applicant has a legal representation. He's going to be contacting us over the next few weeks.
All right. So let's bring up, since it's an informal discussion, let's bring up the focus for 7:45, the College Highway Perspective Marijuana Facility. Why not?
Yes.
This is because they didn't sign in.
They'd probably be interested to know that we're not good until 28th.
Thank you so very much.
They might not want to find things.
Grab a seat?
Have a seat. They all have in their folder, and just so you know, this is the actual doings from the annual town meeting. So this is the way it went. It could change, right?
Yes, we will know by September 28th what the story is. The Attorney General has a certain period of time to tweak it or refuse to accept it if they so choose.
The doings, the bylaws?
The proposed bylaw got passed at town meeting. Has to go to the Attorney General to get approved. They can do whatever they want with it, so we got to wait to hear back from them. If the time passes and they haven't done anything, it gets taken on just the way it's in.
Right, it comes just like this. And this is the local bylaw, which is in addition to all the regulations. Correct, right. This is the Southwick bylaws.
So if you could, just so we have it on the record, if you could just state your names and addresses or business addresses or whatever you wish to put on there, that would be great.
Sure.
Christopher Lally, 74 College Highway, would be the business address?
Yeah, William Fontaine, F-O-N-T-A-I-N-E, 74 College Highway, would be the business address.
Okay.
Do you have a company name or anything or not yet?
We're in the midst of forming that right now.
So tell us what you wish to discuss or what your plans are or however you wish to proceed.
Well, our intentions are to open and operate a small-scale boutique cannabis cultivation facility at 74 College Highway, which is in the industrial restricted zone and also in the marijuana overlay district. We've hired the Levesque Associates to perform a wide variety of services for us for our site planning. We're in the midst of going through all that. You know, we're working with all the departments. We've met with the police. We've met with Carl Steinhardt informally just to see what our steps would be, what we need to do, and go through the town. We want to apply for a Tier 2 cultivation permit, which allows us to have 10,000 square feet of flower and canopy. So the facility would be approximately about 15,000 square feet in size. It'll be all indoors, indoor growing. We plan on doing not hydroponic, but soil-grown recreational cannabis. However, the Mass Law 935, 50160 requires that all recreational and medical cannabis be tested to the same standards. Our soil, our water has to be tested prior to cultivation. Plus, our product has to pass tests before we can even package it and send it out to retailers. We're only going to be a wholesaler. So we'll be selling to retailers, processors, and other recreational, you know, medical dispensaries.
And you're doing both recreational and medical or?
We'll be able to sell medical if there's a need for another company to contract us out because we have the same growing standards. Because everything has to go through the same testing requirements, the soil, the water, and the final product.
It all goes out to the same lab right now in Eastern Mass to be tested, whether it's recreational or medical. So it all has to pass the same stringent requirements, so.
Heavy metals, excuse me, heavy metals, mold, bugs, things of that nature. Our experience with medical cannabis started over six years ago when the laws changed. We were both caretakers. We were growing for patients until the laws changed into recreational and we seized our operations. And we've been... and we seized our operations, and, uh, we've been, um, we believe in cannabis as a medical, medicine and assistance to eradicate opioid addiction. We also see the, you know, the need for the recreational market as well. We wanna be a small scale, uh, business, we don't wanna be a large, huge conglomerate coming into town, um, and that's what I used to, um, I co-founded Berkshire Brewing Company, and, uh, we started as a very small, small company, up in South Deerfield, Massachusetts. I've been through a lot of federal regulations, state regulations for about twenty years, uh, so I understand things of that nature, and, uh, we're hoping to, you know, if we can, do something new in this new industry in, uh, in Southwood here, and I'm a resident of Southwood myself as well.
Just, just off the boards, at the board, uh, they're located just south of the Southwood Historical Society, and just, just south of Nicholson Hill Road. It's a, it's a ten-point-eight acre parcel, where there's a, we have a couple of new people that may not know about that.
And your inclin, your, what you're proposing, or going to be proposing, is gonna be to build a, effectively a greenhouse, like a...
It's like a Butler building.
Metal building, it'll be all indoor, um, security cameras, every door and entrance, somebody doesn't need to have access to a certain room, they won't get access. The building will be surrounded with cameras. Uh, we were talking with the, uh, the chief and the lieutenant in town, and, you know, we were, we're gonna put up some cameras on the roadway north and south, along with our cameras all around the facility, so it's gonna have more, more cameras than a pharmacy, you know, um, it's pretty incredible what, what, what we have to actually do for security reasons, diversion to minors, we won't have, you know, no trespassing, it'd be, so, we have a lot to do, we have a lot of work to do, but it'll be a really tight, secure facility.
Have you talked to, have you started any talks with the building department? Because, you know, it's fifteen thousand square feet, there's a threshold in where he requires, uh, sprinkler systems.
Yes.
So you've talked to Art?
Yes, we, uh...
Fifteen thousand square feet, he's way over there.
Yeah, it's, I think it's seventy-five hundred square feet.
Seventy-five, or they may have changed it to seventy-two.
Seventy-two?
Yeah, we're way over that, yeah, we're over that.
Yeah, we, yeah, that's a, that's a huge expense, but...
And we just wanted to come here and formally introduce ourselves and let you know what we were planning on doing.
It's our intentions, too, huh?
It's our intentions, we, we wanna work with every board in town, we wanna, we wanna be open, we wanna work with you guys and, uh, just wanna be open, we don't wanna get around the bush or anything like that.
It sounds like you're talking to the right people and have already, you know, laid the groundwork to, to do it. Do you have a timeframe that you're kind of looking at, or...
Yes and no, we're, we're not in a rush, we wanna do this right. And with the, uh, the host community agreement and the outreach, it has to be done within six months of us, uh, applying to the state, and then we have, uh, permitting process, so we have some time, we, we probably, we would like to get going next summer, probably, as it looks, you know, because we have, um, there's a lot to set up for this, this is not just opening a brewery or...
When you say get going next summer, you mean open for business?
No, 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 break ground.
Start to break ground.
Break ground.
It's gonna be a process.
Yeah.
This is going to be a process.
Okay.
Yeah, we understand that.
Alright, so you're looking to sort of, you'll probably be in front of us sometime. Winter, spring is what you're kind of shooting for, or even into the summer if it, if it goes.
Yeah, correct, yes.
Alright.
So we're working on all our paperwork and we wanna, we're gonna probably meet more with the, uh, the, uh...
With Levesque and the attorneys.
You'll, you'll have to come in for a special permit, if you're gonna disturb more than a curvally, and you come in for stormwater permit.
Okay.
And then you also, you're gonna have, to get a, a site plan approval.
If we disturb more than an acre.
More than an acre?
Well, no, you need the site, you need the, you need the site, you need the site law, you need the special permit and the, um, stormwater, as well as a site plan. Site plan, they all run together anyway.
Oh, one here.
Okay.
And also at the time, you, you mentioned you might be applying for solar also.
Well, down the road, that's our intentions, we want to get off the grid as much as we can and do our, reduce our carbon footprint. Um, there's plenty of land there, on the north side of the land to, uh, put a solar array, and we're zoned for it. So we're, we're gonna set the building up if we get, you know, approvals to, to be able to accommodate that when the time comes.
Just keep in mind, as you're setting up the building or getting the plans together, that the restrictions in Southwood, as far as what can go on the ground, um, you can take a look at the zoning bylaw, but it's what it's...
Right, well, they're, well, they're in the I R zone, so they are allowed a large permit.
They are in the I R, okay. Okay, oh, that's right, I didn't, yeah, that's right, okay, that's far enough there.
You have to pick the right spot.
So there you go, yeah.
We did.
Well, yeah, we've got a lot of work to do, we wanna, like I said, make, do this right and, uh...
Right.
Some good experience, and we think we can do it.
Right, in the building, it's fifteen thousand square feet, it's a big building, but we don't want it to be an impact on the town, and like Chris was saying, um, security is a huge issue for us, we wanna make sure everything's secure, everything has to be secure for the state anyway, and then Southwood's gonna have their own regulations, and we wanna work with the police department and putting up cameras, and we don't wanna have a huge impact on the town, we're gonna build the Butler building, there's, there will be signs...
The impact on the town we wanna have is, is gonna be positive.
Yeah, yeah, and as far as traffic, it's gonna be minimal, because we're gonna be a wholesaler, so there won't be cars coming in and out, we're not gonna be having a retail shop, so...
Yeah, I assume anything going off, it's gonna be, you know, small truck type.
It's gonna be a small truck.
We will have to have a tractor trailer here and there to deliver us, uh, soil and nutrients and stuff like that, but it's not gonna be a lot all the time, so we'll be, you know, our ordering will be important, uh, and then like U P S and, you know, Federal Express and all those kind of deliveries of that nature, and, uh...
Majority of the traffic's gonna be us.
Eight to twelve employees, we, we expect to, uh, be able to handle in the long run.
And also, what you might have to do is because you're in close proximity to the Great Brook, you'd have to go to consultation, make, you know, as far as their, their setbacks, I'm just trying to touch them on all levels.
Yes, we're, we're working with Levesque on that, and, uh, we have, we have a lot of work to do and make sure that everything's right. We have some good ideas, and, uh, so we've got to get our plan together before we come back.
We'll be in.
Excellent.
What's the water source, are you gonna have a well, or you have, you have town water?
We're gonna tap into the, uh, tap into the, uh, the water in front of us, there's a hydro, public water.
Yeah, there's town water.
Uh, well, it sounds like you're getting all the right bases, I mean, you can check with, um, either Alan, um, or whoever's in the spot of secretary, our secretary's out on, leave right now, but, um, you can check with them as far as, uh, any changes being made to the bylaw, if you want, sometime, you know, in October.
After the twenty-eighth, we should know.
Right, um, you know, just so you can have the right information as you're going forward.
Okay.
Sure.
You know, that's probably the biggest thing we can offer you now, the rest of it, you seem to be on the right path to, to where you need to go, so...
Okay.
Any questions from the board?
Did a good job answering pretty much all of them right from...
Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you very much.
We'll see you in the future.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, actually, we...
I think we do have a copy of that.
We do, we each have a copy of this.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we are.
You're a little early.
Uh, we can, you wanted to cut out some of them, and, because we gotta at least get in the ballpark.
Yeah, we...
I'd say seven fifty.
We'll take a little break, guys.
We got recess?
We'll be back, take a recess.
We can play in the park for a little while?
Yeah, go ahead. You can probably drive a motorcycle around, here's some donuts. Beautiful night to drive a motorcycle.
Oh, I gotta, because I went one-up, I got rid of the whole back end of the bike, it's now called just a one-up, I had to redesign a flag rack for the Patriot Guard, so it's half-on, half-off right now.
So that's probably a good reason not to take it.
It's all custom, it's all custom, stop telling me.
And just so you know, Ruth, Ruth is feeling better, she, she had, um, she had broke her femur, and so she had a head of a rod installed, she's still at her, um, rehab center, hoping to bug them enough to get out quicker than she wants.
Yeah, Marie.
She's pretty feisty.
Yeah, so she had, yeah, but she's not gonna get out there quicker.
You wanna tell her that?
No, she's not.
Did you communicate with Alan on the old prestige sidewalk?
Well, I, you gotta just be ca, we gotta be careful, because Alan has accused himself of that, so just be careful with, but informally, um, is that, you know if anybody's talking to Jesse about the sidewalk fund?
It's, it's been mentioned to him, I mean, do I, am I allowed to?
You can't, yeah, it's, I mean, just...
It's been, it's been mentioned.
I think it takes her, I'll get you if he has a position on it.
I'd rather not set a position.
Okay, I'm sure.
So we haven't formally, as you, as you mentioned, we haven't prepared, then sent a formal letter to them, as a step, the select board did authorize use of town council if, if appropriate.
So, um...
At your discretion.
Just a, just a brief, a brief thing, we're talking about it, that used to be in our chapter three, three, that was one of his, put aside, and, uh, when I was decided here, Mr. Beglin chastised me.
I gave him one, he's not be here.
So he, he moved, there was no facilities, there was no...
It's when we approved the west.
Now, as of the last time, it's kinda getting, they put it into a ball, you know, into the guidance of rain.
Yeah, I mean, I, um, so that's where, so here's what I'd say, is, why don't you do me a favor, can you just get me a copy of the special permit?
I actually need to dig the project, I mean, I have two other, each project I just got, I think that...
You can just let Jesse know, of course, we'll send him a letter, it just says, you know, obviously it's voted into special permit, we...
Just beginning, we can go on lots of things.
It's set up and, you know, we're gonna request the...
I mean, for work to tell some part, there's some money else I think.
And the other thing is...
We can respond however he responds, and then we'll figure out, you know, I'm not gonna get you in the, but just, just sort of give a heads up.
It used to be, um, it used to be, um...
You know, I mean, it's, I, it, to be fair, it can go both ways, right, I mean, you can say, well, it's in, it's in the permit, so that's, it's a permit, you know, so you bought it with knowledge.
Page three is, page three was the motion, and page six was the amount.
So you, you know, you could say you bought it with knowledge, and it's in the permit, and you're, but you can also say, listen, I bought it with knowledge that...
Don't jerk about stuff, you need to...
The fund no longer uses it, so, you know, it's gonna happen.
He knows the order, right, he knows, he helps us too.
But, uh...
Always, always be careful.
We'll send him a letter, um...
Who was the shooting guy in town before, who was? No, no, it's who streets.
Me, Dean.
Dean, yeah.
D L B's.
D L B. But they, they're gonna, they're gonna, D L B, he's being told, I mean, he's, he wasn't...
The other thing is, too, on the, uh, the greens at Southwood, we don't have a number, dollar figure yet for that site.
Well, I usually wanna help, you know, when we...
I don't know who generates it, whether it's you and Randy, or whether Rob's at it, and you guys...
Rob, Rob, he's working now on the bonding aspect, and I would think that this would be part of the bonding aspect, because you're gonna...
How's it start, one of the three, and that or something, at the...
Randy and I will look at the numbers to make sure they're within range.
Yeah, yeah.
Randy has a...
I don't know if we set a stipulation as to when that money should be deposited, you know, before they get a building permit, or, because they're moving incredibly quickly, they've already got one house set to build.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I...
Lot seventeen, it's on, uh, it's on a website, real estate.
I'm not sure that they can...
I know they have seven, seven sales, but they haven't closed them.
I mean, I don't know if they can get a, they can't get a permit to build without...
The bond, the bond has to be set first.
Bond has to be set first, they have to...
They can build, but they can't get their C O into the binder course and all the drainage and all the utilities and everything.
That's true, they can build, yeah, they can build.
Or the, or the, yeah.
Yeah, it's a website, Zillow, I get notices on, on my email, and I couldn't believe it, it shows up, reads itself, with lot seventeen, eighteen hundred square feet, three hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Oh, that stays, oh, sorry. Uba, uba, and I have an original note. If you guys don't make any changes, I have one for signature.
That's good, good to be known.
I didn't see anything very...
So, one of the things that I didn't know what to do with was, I had a, a thing that was highlighted, it said, I might, Michael Doherty moved to grant a special permit for flexible residential development, conditions set forth in section seven above, so...
Oh, that was in the special permit, section seven of the special permit.
Oh.
So it would have been, um, you can, if you wanna write, section seven of the special, as set forth in section seven of the special permit, we can just change that and, and it should be fine, right, what page is that on, four?
Six.
It's on the last page.
Six.
Okay.
Oh, there we go, um...
It just didn't make, I was like, section seven of what?
Yeah, so just write, um, move to grant the special permit for this flexible residential development with the conditions as set forth in the permit, in the special permit. And that's fine.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, that's fine, I just did, I was like, I knew there was something I wanted to ask you about.
Yeah, no, I think, I, I mean, I'm not looking at the special, but I think that's, we had enough sections, we had a bunch, a bunch of sections, so it probably was just referring back to...
Yeah, and I could just say, in the special permit, I think that's what I'll do, I don't think I'll do a section, because then I don't have, because it's the last page that I'm gonna have to reprint for signature.
Yeah, I made humble comments.
I think I fixed all your stuff.
Prior to us, there wasn't anything huge.
I don't remember giving this, did you see this thing?
No, because I, Mike, because Mike hadn't sent it back to me, I usually send it to the, those two firsts, and then if they, after they fix it, then I send it out to everybody, and Mike was...
You have to understand, I never respond to Ruth unless I...
Well, I heard today, Ruth has a number for your assistant or something, I have not had that opportunity to have that information, not privileged yet, what's her name?
Now you are.
Yeah, now you will, just throw it in the office, because, so that...
Did you see when he did, he broke the North Moon Street, Seth Keller took the old, it was a bridge with a date on it, put it over his property.
I haven't been up that road. You mean the cement?
Yeah, yeah, it's just like, it's just for the, all the bridge, Seth Keller took it, put it over his property, I go, whoa, it's got a date on it.
Oh, really?
That's tough.
Shirtless?
Shirtless, something like that. Somebody was posting all the updates online.
Shirtless, yeah, so...
Does anyone have anything?
Feel free to bug her, she will get it.
Thirty-first of July, for minutes.
No, okay, I just have...
Everybody good with it?
The, 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 the market, we're good.
I mean, the, the stuff from pages three on, you just cut and pasted, right?
Yeah, that, that, I did, I cut and pasted, so that means, but that's the problem with changing that, now that I think about it, because that's...
No, no, that's fine, I don't, yeah, that's fine.
Is it all right, because it's the minutes, okay?
It's the minutes.
Okay, but see how these were a roll call vote, and I had to write, Mr. Doherty, yes, Mr. Marcus Phelps, yes, Mr. Richard Arkner, yes, so there could have been no's. Oh, okay, look, I didn't, oh, yeah, I did. Oh, okay, look, I didn't, oh, yeah, I did.
Are we back in session?
Okay, so.
We've been in session.
Oh, we have been?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have to go print this one page for signature though.
Okay. So all, all we've said is, I think the select board is going to be interested in our taping, because, uh, on the marijuana. We, we only keep the tape until the minutes are done and then we recycle the tapes.
I don't know anymore.
And once, once, once it's in.
They started to put it online though, for a month.
Yes.
And then that went away.
Yeah, that, that's never come to fruition. So our policy is, we use them until we have official signed minutes and then tapes.
Whatever they do, they do it, you know.
Go away.
I'd rather than get the actual bylaws, updated bylaws on the website than put.
I, I, I keep asking you to do that.
All right, yeah, I know, I'll get that, but, um, all right, so. This is your copy.
Well, you can add it to use, I was just using it to do that draft.
Signature page.
Remember I, I drafted that letter and emailed it to you.
Let me just take a couple notes and then, oh.
I need to know who motions in seconds, did you did that?
Did you do that yet?
For the, for Steve to have town council.
I didn't take that.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah, that, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
So it's gonna be an attachment, but it doesn't need to be now, so you can add it.
The, the letter referenced the sections, though, right?
Uh, I think so.
Yeah, no, that's fine, um, all right, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of July thirty first, two thousand eighteen?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, standing, all right, coming down.
And then you see at the bottom of it, at the bottom of the table two, who it's distributed to, so you can just like highlight it. And then there's email that goes to emails, but they're different.
I gotta set right enough path to that hurricane.
Who gets the minutes might be different than who gets the.
Comes down there, David. Who you got?
They're going to their evacuation.
Comes down there.
No, my cousins, Golliffe, Kevin Golliffe, he, uh, he was, he was in the Coast Guard for thirty eight years.
Oh, he knows how to ride out of storm.
Well, he can lake swim out.
So I didn't know, no, no, right.
It's a long story, I'll tell you later. I didn't vote on that, but you don't need to signature.
Right.
So you break it.
Are we waiting for the clock, are we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
Oh, you gotta go.
Dave, how's Michelle? Good? No, he's busy.
Pardon?
How's Michelle? Every day?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We thought about the other day, uh, that it's back.
Oh, no.
And it's in the bones.
No, Dave, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's just a question of where do we go from here and that's just a whole lot of week.
Yep.
You attracted a small audience. For the Skybox.
That's why I was waiting.
Friends who made, yeah, it's important. Do we have any good, anything decent? Diagram or any kind of?
Um, anybody who's here for the eight o'clock, please be sure you signed in with your name and address, so I'm sure to spell things correctly. Oh, there's no pen, here.
Oops.
There was one, somebody stole the pen.
And we had the chief of police here and they still told. Wow.
I'll look you up on the assessor's.
So I'll get a letter together.
Yeah, a little memo.
A letter together or what?
Send to Jesse.
Over Steve.
To just say to have.
Oh, is this part of the minutes?
Uh, we can put it in the minutes, that we're gonna get together a letter to Jesse that says, um, uh, that notes that in the special permit, it, um, it requires that an offsetting amount be deposited, so there's a ton of sidewalk involvement account and move sidewalks on both sides of the development and the amount was to be forty one thousand eighty dollars, prior to this issue of some building permits. And just to let us know what his, everything's, our actions are. Requirement and we'll go from there, so I don't know what I, that's what it sounds like the select board has requested and so I'd like to just find out what the positions are and then we can deal with it at that point. But until I know that there's contrasting positions.
So just a discussion about what?
Yeah, I just want to know what his position is on, basically, so.
And you're gonna draft, you're gonna draft?
I'll draft it and I'll get it out to, I'll send it out to you.
Oh, no, you have, well, so do you guys have, I have a, our Terry at Southwood and I don't send it to Rozi Kay.
Yeah.
I mean, you can and I'll just. And I only check it when I'm here, I've sent some of that, I've thought about putting it on my phone and decided that.
I did, not mine.
I can check it at home, but I don't have it on my phone.
I, I put mine on the phone.
It's a good thing you waited, because once people show up.
That's why I was waiting.
The neighbors.
Good man.
The neighbors. You gotta love these non-conforming uses in residential areas. It's the way it is when it was a little grocery store back in whatever, thirties.
Right.
Forties, then it.
Well, when you had to walk it, you didn't have a car, you had.
There were a lot of those little places.
There is.
Oh, this is the.
There aren't many that are left. Grandville stores.
Right, this just, this just came in.
Right.
It was to make you aware of the fact, the one question is, they're disturbing less than an acre. And they're asking for a waiver. Question is, does this have to be advertised even though they're, does it fall into? Because they, we just got this in the mail today and they haven't paid any taxes, so I didn't know if they.
I don't know that by law, no.
I'd have to look at it, is it, is it a waiver, do you have to get a waiver or do you not have to get a permit if you meet, if you don't, unless you meet certain requirements?
Have to get a permit, it's greater than an acre.
But it's not a waiver, it's just, you don't meet the requirements to having to request a permit.
But someone has to prove the waiver. We have to.
Yeah, but that doesn't have to mean, unfortunately, steering or anything like that.
Basically, you know, it's a request denied or approved.
So wouldn't that be like a sign review?
Yeah, I mean, I almost think it's not even, I might even say that's not a board necessarily, not a different to me, but I'm.
But that's why I was in the background.
Yeah, I didn't want to.
I can look again at the, um, bylaws just to make sure, but I don't think it has to be.
The biggest threshold.
They're not asking for a waiver, they just don't meet the threshold for.
Well, I think we do have to request a waiver.
Requesting.
A waiver has to be granted, I think.
It would seem kind of silly to advertise it.
I think it's like a sign.
Well, it's like an.
Yeah, on the agenda, I guess we on the agenda, request for a waiver.
My dad, my dad is a laxer, for no reason.
Exactly.
So I'm a first generation immigrant. Why would I do that?
I think we have.
Okay, yeah.
We have, but it's happening, it'll still, on all the others, like, pretty, the last, the last one we did was special. It was a private special permit, well, permit, it was, it was part of that.
I think we need to. And if it is, then we put it number.
So my dad came over, he was sixteen years old, he was nineteen thirteen.
Maybe Marcus.
Like, what's that?
Nobody, no, we got a couple, that's wrong, that's wrong, but even, on the ones that don't disturb an acre, you don't do anything specific about it, you know.
For a house.
We just ignore it.
Who is it?
Oh, yeah.
But, but I.
This is Nicholson Road.
But I think this is unique, because this is, you don't need a special permit.
What's he got?
Um.
Which it doesn't really matter that it's a group home, it's a, it's a single family.
Yeah, I mean, if I, if, if, if I was going to build a house and I was disturbing less than an acre.
You wouldn't even apply.
I wouldn't apply.
I think because there's a lot of public outcry and they're trying to follow every.
One residence, it's not.
All right, so let me look at the bylaw and I will, um, let's do your kind of, yeah.
It's just behind the bar.
Oh, I have an extra.
Uh, it may be.
The bar would be over here, so.
Where's College Highway, Miss Fisher?
It's not in here.
Allen, just on the College Highway end or the other, College Highway end, right?
It's halfway up the hill.
It's halfway up. There's a lot before, um, what is it, Rosa, right?
Almost right across from two J, watch.
Yeah, okay, okay.
It doesn't really matter what they're building, it's whether they need to actually come to us for a way.
If they're not disturbing an acre, they don't have to.
I, I don't think we need to start that, because we'd have to do it for every single, single family, so, I will look at it, but my inclination is to say we don't need to and you can just.
We just have to acknowledge, I think the building inspector has to acknowledge, someone has to acknowledge whenever there's a building permit being pulled, whether they're disturbing more than an acre.
It's.
Maybe ask Art, what he does, if he does something.
Yeah.
Maybe he chucks a box out, I don't know.
Are you disturbing more than an acre?
But I will look at the.
Apply for.
I will look at the bylaw and I'll see if the parties do anything differently, but, I mean, we would have to do it for every single house.
State put in some stuff.
All right. Okay. Eight o'clock P M, twenty three Point Grove Road, public hearing, special permit application for Skybox addition of a kitchen. Who is here for the applicants?
Patrick and Natalie Lynch.
Good evening, good, how are you?
Not bad, it's been, it's been a long road.
What's your address?
Uh.
Our home address?
Twenty five Point Grove Road, it's twenty three slash twenty five.
Yeah, it's actually, yeah, the address is twenty three Point Grove, the corporation is called twenty five.
Okay, so.
How you doing?
Yeah.
Good, good.
Let me just.
Nice to meet you all.
Let me just read this notice and then we will get into your presentation. Um, notice of public hearing, Tuesday, September eleventh, two thousand eighteen, eight o'clock P M, Land Use Hearing Room, four fifty four College Highway. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of M G L, chapter forty A, section eleven, that the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September eleventh, two thousand eighteen. At eight o'clock P M in the Land Use Hearing Room, Town Hall, four fifty four College Highway, on an application by Patrick and Natalie Lynch for special permits and site plan approval for twenty three Point Grove Road, zoned as residential twenty R twenty. The property is shown on current assessor's map, one thirteen, parcel seventy three. The applicant proposes to alter a scorecard by constructing a kitchen within the existing footprint in accordance with the code of Southwick zoning bylaws, chapters one, chapter one eighty five, sections nine, ten, thirteen, twenty two, and twenty eight A one C. Copy of the application and the plans may be inspected at the planning board or the town clerk's office during regular office hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated, Michael Doherty, to the person, Southwick Planning Board. Yeah, I'll wait until they do, I'll let you do your sort of presentation about it, there are some comments that I'll read after that and then we can, you can, I'll give you guys a chance to address any of those comments.
I mean, we're, we're looking to just, you know, be more of a family establishment with a kitchen, uh, it's something we wanted since day one and, uh, we're at a point now financially, we, we can afford to do it and, um, you know, we're just looking to get some guidance and, and, and figure out what we need to do and what the steps are necessary for us to, uh, get past this and, and move forward and, and open up the kitchen for the building. I mean, currently we're serving alcohol to our patrons and no food, which, you know, you really want to be able to serve food to your patrons and, uh, you know, that's, that's a concern that keeps me up at night. I had a full head of hair, you know, ten years ago and, uh, it's, but it's, it's a very serious, uh, situation and, you know, we want to be, again, a family establishment, somewhere where people can come from town and enjoy a, a, a good meal, um.
I mean, we raised our kids here, our kids, we have three kids, we raised our kids here and we coached and we were always involved with school, I paraprofeshioned for three years, I was daycare here for nine, raised a lot of these kids that are, that are here and it's funny because there was never really a place, like, after, we, we go like to the, the, um, summer house, like, after a game or whatever, but we would love to be like the Applebee's of Southwick, where you could bring your kids in to kind of be separate, a little separate from the atmosphere and have like food and hang out and watch a baseball game, because there's so many of them and and football games and stuff like that with your kid, you know what I mean, and just hang out, because we would love to have done that with our kids, but there wasn't anything like that, you know, so, um, you know.
In a nutshell, it's really what we're trying to accomplish, um, and, you know, we, we, we're in a position now where we feel like we have the ability to do that and, you know, with your help and cooperation and feedback, um, we'd love to be able to proceed and, and, and build it into a place where everyone here would be proud to walk in and sit down and have a, you know, a good, solid meal, uh, with, with great staff.
We have good staff.
I'm pretty sure eighty five percent of our staff live in Southwick, have kids, um, you know, are, whether they're single parents or, um, have families, you know, and that's what we're all about, we're a family over there.
Um, so, and I will confess to being ignorant and maybe it's because I have a four and a six year old, so for the reasons you just stated, I haven't been to the Skybox.
Yep.
Oh, well.
So.
That's, we're trying to attract you.
Um, so perhaps you can describe to me what it have now and what you are looking to change, like, as far as the setup and the amount of tables or, you know, just.
There's a lot of new members too that don't have the history, so.
Currently, currently we have, um, a capacity for ninety five people and we have, I'd say about fifteen tables, um, that are four to a table and we have, um, seating at the bar for approximately twenty five people. So a lot of that would not change, because we have the seating and we have the, the ability to, to serve our customers, the only problem is we don't have anything to serve them. You know, you can only, you can only live so long on beef jerky and, and, and chips. And that's really what we're looking to change and we're looking to put in a kitchen, uh, to be able to, inside the building, to be able to serve those customers.
What, what space are you using to put that kitchen in?
There is a section of our bar currently that is somewhat dead space and, uh, we would, we would, that's one of the options contingent on the building inspector as well. I can pass this around and you can kind of see this, this little section right here, which is just kind of, um, for, for, for lack of a better word, dead space. We already have a fifteen hundred gallon grease trap in the ground that's tied into our plumbing, that was done when we, when we were using the, uh, the, the kitchen that we had, which was a temporary structure, which our permit got pulled. Because it's a temporary structure, so.
A change in customer service square footage, because you don't serve a customer.
So basically for those new members, it's in an R twenty zone and it's, it's considered what's, it's a pre-existing non-conforming and they're not planning on doing any external conditions, they're just doing internal, so that's, and it's basically, it's a, a change of use, so they're looking for.
Reduce the square footage. Do, how much does it?
I don't know, um, I believe our open floor plan right now is twenty three hundred and fifty square feet, uh, with what you're looking at right there and I believe the kitchen space is about two hundred square feet, um, if I'm not mistaken.
So you're.
So reduce your customer service area a little bit.
Um. It's kind of dead space.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of an area that's, that's not really used.
Because the bar is here.
Yeah, the bar, they may be like, so if this were, touch that, um, I'm sorry, I don't want to touch that, okay. So if this were the, the entire bar, this little area would seat four people and then the area where the kitchen would be, it would be right here, so there's just like, there's a fireplace, there.
Won't their seating capacity change once they put the kitchen in?
So are you losing the, the spots at the bar over to the right of the bar here where the kitchen's gonna be?
Four seats, that's it.
No, actually two seats.
Two seats, oh, sorry.
Two seats.
And your capacity might not be ninety five anymore.
Just by the square footage, yeah.
Yeah, you're reducing your square footage.
Um, I.
Are you losing and/or gaining seats?
Because.
It's a good thing, but that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Well, we, um, there are areas of the bar that we currently don't use, because we don't have the need to use them, because we don't have any, um, uh, food. So the area that we used is, is, like I said, there used to be, um, there used to be video games in this area that it was just, it was kind of dead area.
Still a dead area, right now it's not being used.
There's the trailer that we had for four or five years that we were operating and then previous owners, uh, that we bought the business from had the trailer for about ten years and they were operating a kitchen out of that trailer. So that trailer is basically behind this doorway right here, which will obviously go away if we get the approval to, uh, to move forward with, with the kitchen plans. So this was, again, this was, this was dead space.
And we have this open space over here where, um, is this where, this is the pool table?
This, this reception area.
This reception area, it's.
Fifteen.
Which has nothing in it, you know?
By, by thirty feet, which, which we're, which we currently aren't using, so that's, that's open space.
We were thinking of, of, yeah, of putting seating in there as well, you know, you could put booths in there as well.
So let me read the comments from D P W and we can, this will go into what we're discussing right here.
Okay.
Um. It's an email from Randy Brown, who's the director. It's an email from Randy Brown, who's the director of the Department of Public Works. Here are D P W's comments for the special permit in site plan application for twenty-three Point Grove Road. The sketch entitled Existing Layout the Skybox and dated eight two seventeen that was submitted with the application shows parking spaces around the perimeter of the building. Are these his or are these on the existing one, the letters?
This is what was prepared.
Yeah, I mean, I made seven copies.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, Section B shows six spaces. However, it appears that, uh, from the aerial map, that three of the spaces are occupied by a dumpster and/or other container. Section E shows two spaces, but one of them is partially within the town's right-of-way along Point Grove Road. Section F shows fifteen spaces, however, these are located within the town's right-of-way that butts the rail trail. Even though the spaces in Section E and F may be used by patrons of the Skybox, D P W does not believe that the applicant can claim credit for using them for planning purposes as future work by the town may render them no longer usable. Two, handicap parking spaces should be identified on this plan. Three, though there is no scale on the plan, it appears that the parking spaces shown are ten feet by twenty feet or larger.
Correct.
Per town bylaws, at least seventy percent of driveway shall be at least, I think that means parking spaces.
Parking spaces.
Shall be at least ten feet by twenty feet and the remaining thirty percent can be nine feet by sixteen feet.
Right.
The applicant should consider revising this drawing to incorporate smaller spaces that meet the guidelines in an effort to create more parking. Based on this plan, it does not appear that the applicant is proposing to modify the existing water and sewer services or make any changes to the driveway entrances. If there are any changes to the services or driveway entrance, the applicant should secure the applicable permit from the D P W. So.
So you made the parking spots too big?
Well, no, so the.
No, I did. I did, I did that.
The parking is going to be an issue here, right? So we got to just sort of walk through this because there is, um, requirements and stuff as far as what the parking needs to be.
So what I did with Section E, I measured all this out to ensure that we, we had sufficient space. Um, I believe that the, the, the law states fifteen feet from the, from the street. And in Section E, those two spots, these are very rough drawings. But the two spots that were, um, set up for Section E are fifteen feet from the street. As far as B is concerned, um, Section B, the dumpster can be moved to the opposite side of the lot where, where there's, there's, um, there's opening area and we planned on doing that as well.
Kind of where this little tree is by the double Cs. See that? There's a tree there right in front of there. We can put the.
What's the other container that's in a spot that looks like this?
That, that was, that was, I'm assuming taken years ago. It was a dumpster.
Okay.
It was a huge dumpster that we were doing a spring clean-up. So that's no longer there.
Okay, it's not, it's not the existing dumpster. It's just a, a one, one off.
One time, like they just happened to catch it.
All right.
So Section B is actually, I, I measured seventy-six feet because I didn't go out all the way to our property line. Section B is actually eighty-five feet long and at nine feet per spot, I can actually get nine spots in there. Which would be an additional three spots. And from what I understand, the only reason I used F in the picture.
No, right, uh, wait, yes.
It's the property line.
Basically, if you look at the, if you look at the little attachment, see where it says the one eighty-eight? That's just right there.
Yep, yep. So.
It says one eighty-eight.
Should separate it so you can see it.
Yeah, there's going to have to be some means of access to these spots. So you're going to have to have some, I don't know if you can angle these and maybe you can allow it, but you're, you're going to have to be able to come from the road and access these.
Correct.
You can't access them, you can't allow for access off of this right-of-way here. So you gotta, or this town land here.
Okay.
Um, so I think that would take out maybe one spot from over in Section A.
Okay.
If you angle them, you could probably, or make them smaller, whatever you had to do. But I think you would have to have some sort of access to those spots to make them.
Like a, like a drive-through.
Correct.
Okay.
As opposed to, I'm looking at spot, well, Alan has his numbered, but the spot closest to where the cars are parked down here on F.
Yes, we're in here?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Because this is the town property line.
Correct.
So you have to be able to drive.
How many spots do they need?
Right.
And adjust.
They need forty-three.
Forty-three.
So, so with, um.
And how many handicap?
And F has seventeen, so that gets down to forty-one. Now, so here's, I mean, here's the other part of this, right? Is that this, forty-three are required based on the calculation of.
Ninety-five people occupancy.
Correct. It's based on your occupancy level.
Right.
And so you need forty percent of that plus what?
One per employee.
Per employee at peak shift. So that's what you're required to do. So whatever your occupancy is, is what generates the parking spaces required. And so if you are cutting down space and you don't necessarily need, you know, your occupancy may be able to go down slightly.
To like ninety instead of ninety.
And, and, you know, so I mean, there's some, just keep that in mind.
Right.
That's the sort of variable that is going to affect, um, the parking spaces.
Right.
Plus you made them too big. Like you made them big for five reasons. I made it by design.
Go to the building department to get occupancy spread out to the side of the thing and then come.
Correct. So, um, so, yeah, I mean, I, I'd say this, I mean, I'm not going to speak real hard for it, but it's, I'm guessing we're going to have to kick this over to at least another meeting to deal with some of this and get a more, um, detailed drawing that has measurements and smaller spaces presumably to sort of accommodate that.
Right.
And doesn't have the Section F and whatever else. But I mean, I, I think we would want to deal with that. But it strikes me that if you're needing forty-three maximum, maybe even less than that, you could probably get it.
There is some stipulation in, in the, in the bylaw where they, they can ask for an eighty percent reduction depending on existing conditions.
Twenty percent reduction to eighty percent?
It says an eighty percent, eighty percent.
A reduction to eighty percent.
Yeah, that counts, that counts. Which would, which would bring that down to thirty-five.
I mean, I, you know, you could do that. It strikes me personally that you, having more is probably better for your business, frankly, and probably for that location. It's probably better to have more than less. But that's my opinion.
And, and, yes, and I, and I agree a hundred percent. Now, obviously the, the, Section F, the reason I put it there is because although it is obviously town property, we maintain that, we've maintained that property for the last ten years. We plow that property, we clean that property, we have an arrangement with the town. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with the, the cameras that are installed in the tunnel because there was vandalism. The power that runs those cameras is from our building. We, we volunteered to, to pay for the, the install and, and the running of the electrical. So although it's town-owned property, it's kind of common, similar to like Louis B's. Right? Louis B's has parking for maybe thirty cars. They have a, they, they're, they're licensed for two hundred and fifty people. The only way they can accommodate that is by using public parking. You know, I just put it there because it's, it, it's kind of, you know, it's used, just like people that use the rail trail, use our parking spaces as well.
Yeah, they park it.
You know, and.
No, and that's certainly something that can be considered, right? I mean, and, and even if you had less and were requesting a reduction to some number between eighty percent and a hundred percent.
Right.
You know, you, I think you can at least acknowledge that there is space there. You don't count them toward it, but you acknowledge that that is a viable alternative parking area.
It's got to flow well too, though.
Yeah, I mean, if they have access here, you can easily just turn, I guess, turn, right? I don't know. I mean, that's got to.
Those are, um, what are those?
What are what?
Those are vehicles.
Some of these vehicles.
Those are vehicles, yeah. It might be construction vehicles.
Oh, no, you know what it was when we were doing the, the cleanup? We parked over there. That's what it was.
Might have been.
Yeah.
Instead of the picture.
Well, but this shows the trees in the actual parking lot. I mean, I suppose if you can transfer that up to that, nothing.
You just need a catch.
All right, so that's, I mean, that's the one issue that I sort of see. What else? Did Randy say anything else? I think he did. Oh, you have to identify the handicap spots, which are one or two.
Should be right in front.
Right, you should, you should not talk, you've, you've been talking to the building inspector.
Well, yeah, we.
About taking, I'll be, take the, um, part of the trailer.
Yes.
Because I think I saw a letter, but you should also ask him as far as the handicap accessibility.
Okay.
What's required. Realistically, it might be two, but I would check with him.
Okay.
Um, any other comments from the board? Questions?
Not this time. They're staying within the footprint of the existing building. So that's a plus.
I'd like to think the town, if some leader, they're using your facility for cameras and everything. And Rose Chels using your facility, I mean, they'll be able to give and take here.
And we, we actually monitor the cameras.
Yeah, we have them in the office.
The screens are in, in our office as well, so we monitor, you know, if we see something that's going on, we'll, we'll let them know. In addition to it being broadcast at the police department as well, but obviously they have a ton of cameras to look at and, you know, we could quickly look at the cameras and, you know, if we see something and we've called over, you know, on a couple of occasions, you know, there were just people at night specifically that are kind of hanging out down there that really shouldn't be, you know, we can make a quick phone call and say, hey, just send somebody over. And we plow it. I mean, we maintain this, we maintain this lot, you know, in all weather conditions. We're out there cleaning it, you know, trying to keep it neat as well.
What's the surface of the park, parking lot?
It's gravel, um, it's, it's pavement and it's also like a trap rock. You know, like a.
So do you have an apron along the road that, as you come into the gravel area?
Well, apparently, um, and I'm not sure how this is going to play out, but the D P W is in the process of putting in drainage. I just got a letter last week and signed off on it and, and, and brought it back this morning, as a matter of fact. They're putting in drainage and they're going to re, they're going to resurface that, that, that whole area. So I don't, you know, maybe I can work with them and find out exactly what we need to do to ensure that it's, um, set up properly.
Because Randy, Randy didn't comment anything about an apron as far as coming off the pavement, whether or not it gravel gets pulled out and people go out of your parking area. You know, whether they take anything out onto the.
What's an apron? I'm sorry. My ignorance.
What, what was it?
What's an apron?
Well, just be a.
A lot of times, a lot of times it's from the edge of the pavement.
That's for concrete.
Okay.
But the majority of this is a gravel.
And they, yeah, and the trap rock actually is on the town side. So. It was dirt until they did Veteran Street. They did construction on Veteran Street. And when they were done with it, they, we actually, again, another thing that we did was the town wanted to use our property to store all the construction equipment, which was supposed to be a month or two, and it wound up being pretty much all summer long. And, you know, they, they said they were going to use a specific area. It wound up being about seventy-five percent of our, our lot. And when they were done, they, they, they graded it and they put the trap rock down.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
I made sure they were hydrated.
Yeah, it was hot.
It was hot.
All right, any town officials here tonight that have comments or questions? Any members of the public that have comments or questions? Terry, just state your name and address for, before you.
Why don't you state my name?
No, you have to state your name.
Terry Mitch, two sixty-four Granville Road. I've known this couple for a good number of years and they're really, they're, they're quality people. When they say they're going to do something, they're, they're going to do it. They're really fond of the town. But that's on a personal end. On the, on the, on the other end, I have stopped in there a time or two for things.
Hydration.
Unfortunately.
It gets hot when I used to work. But the food, when they had it, was excellent. It was a gem in town. And, you know, their hamburgers were, were great. I was mentioning to somebody today and they said, oh, the onion rings are just really terrific. And I go, oh, yeah, I forgot about that. So, you know, the food end of it, um, they're, they're good. I mean, they, they've had a couple of different chefs in there and the two that I know of were really, you know, quality. They put up quality food. The other kind of thing is, is that there's a lot of people that live in that area, okay? And it's a place that you can walk to and pick up a burger or whatever, have a burger and a beer or whatever, you know. And, you know, there's places like Legend is gone, Jimmy's, you know, is gone. Brass Rail's gone. Not that that was, you know, back in its day, it served, but. So your options there have decreased, you know, again. And, and it's a place you can walk to and they want to make it more of a family thing. They, they are dedicated to family. I do know that they grew up with, with my son, their, their sons. So I think it's a great idea and I'm looking forward to go back in there and have a hamburger and onions.
Any other comments or questions from the public? Okay.
I'd like more information on the onion rings.
Sounds about right. You're good. We're, I'm sorry, go ahead. Just get your name and, uh, address, please.
Steve Quatnum, I own thirty-three Point Grove. When these guys came along, when Randy and Patrick bought the bar, I supported them. When they got, you know, politics aside and how, how they ran their Saturday nights, I kind of went the, onto the other side and I wouldn't walk there for a hamburger or a beer. I'd go to, I'd go down the road just anywhere else but next door. Just, just because even when it's quiet, I don't want to go there. So if this helps alleviate what happens on Saturday nights, I'm all for it. What is, it's not just counting parking spaces. It's also counting what it's going to do to the, the behavior at the bar. And tips training would help. I mean, people who actually did what tips training is supposed to do would, would help. I know from living there, you don't call the police because they don't, you know, you're just an high-rate neighbor and that's all you are. So I think I would support any positive change. But just saying, you know, we, we helped plow the parking lot in exchange for a favor from the town, I don't think is right. I think there's more to this than that.
Let me ask you, if I could, do you see this as a, I mean, at the end of the day, do you see this as a positive or a negative?
I see this as a positive.
Okay.
If it's a sign.
But if, if, if everyone's being nice to each other, as things oftentimes are in meetings and then in the real life that we experience. So I'm a little, I, I'm always cynical, that's all. But I am for the change.
I guess my question is, is, is it, do you see a way that this could be, that could make it worse than what you currently see?
No, I don't think, you know.
Okay, so that's, that's where I'm trying to, I don't, okay, all right.
Are your hours going to change at all being a restaurant?
Well, I mean, the, the goal is to, is, you know, obviously, you know, the, the weekends you have, you know, you have people that, that come out for entertainment. I think we've done, uh, you know, obviously, I don't think you've ever come into our establishment.
I did, we slayed at it and.
Yeah, but you haven't honestly.
Came in once to complain.
Right.
And that was before, I complained to you once before I complained to the police.
Right.
And that didn't work, I'm sorry.
I think that was my partner Randy that you spoke to when, when.
I'm talking to one occasionally.
Right. Well, I can assure you, I can assure you that that will change because that's what our objective is. We're, we're in this to, to build a community place. I want you to walk next door and to come in and I want to sit down with you and maybe share some food. That's really what my goal is.
Wish you guys would come in now. It really looks very nice.
And, and all of our staff tips certified and they, and they make sure that they, they take care of the people that, that are there at night to the point where they've actually.
Taking people home.
Right, and, and they've called the police in to say, listen, this person, you know, can't be driving. And, and a lot of that has to do with, unfortunately, you know, we're in an environment right now where people walk into our, into our establishment and ultimately we're responsible. They'll have one beer and then all of a sudden the person. They'll have one beer and then all of a sudden the person is sideways. So it's not the beer per se.
It's the nips that they have in their pockets that we try.
And we have no control over that. Um, but we're very diligent and, and, and very concerned about the people that come into our establishment. And having food and having people that are in this room coming into our establishment will eliminate that. I'd rather those people go somewhere else. And I'm, I'm sincere about that.
And that's good, but we, you know, we're renting, we're renting the duplex next year, so we need tenants to be happy as well.
Sure. And I would love for them to be able to come in and sit down and, you know, I want, I want the ability to have an area that's separate from the bar area so that when mom and dad are done with, with soccer, baseball, football, whatever the situation is, they can come, have a burger, have some food, have a pint of beer. There's nothing wrong with having a pint of beer. And then being on the merry way. That's the type, type of place that we're moving to, to transform. And we've been working diligently towards that. Unfortunately, in two thousand thirteen, when the rug got pulled out from underneath us financially, we could not afford to, to build the kitchen outside. We did everything else that we could do. Um.
Now, can you use that space where the deck is as a permanent building or?
No.
No, that's not part of the footprint.
No, it'll be inside the footprint.
And I have to say that, you know, other than physically patting people down, because you can't do that, I myself have picked up, when the summer, when the spring started, a hundred and forty-one, this is no joke, fireball nips thrown over the fence. I clean the parking lot. Like, you could see me, like, walking around. I might have a dog with me, walking around, cleaning up the parking lot. Hundred and forty-one. That's a lot.
Yeah, so you understand.
No, it's very frustrating. It's like we had seven boats. We don't sell this. It's just like, and it's, it's frustrating on multiple levels because I have to clean it. And then, you know, it's, you can't, you can't look at things at face value. So when you're serving somebody, you have to kind of be like, okay, I just gave this guy a beer. How is he acting this way? And then throw drugs into the butt.
Alright, um, any other comments, questions from the public? Go ahead. Just, uh, state your name and address, please.
Dan Lynch, sixteen Rock Road Road. Um, the comment that I got is for the, for the temporary building. How long is the temporary building gonna be temporary?
It's gone.
What temporary? The temporary, once, once we can move, I've got all my kitchen equipment in that temporary structure. Once we have the ability to move forward and, and, and bring the equipment inside the building, that trailer will be gone.
We're actually helping with it. We just get it right for you.
So what's shown, just so, just so I understand, what is shown on this plan as the separate buildings?
There is no separate building. It's, it's not, yeah, it's not, it's not on it.
Oh, it's not even.
They're gone. These two, this is, uh.
Yeah.
Town website on?
So the trailer, what, what they're talking about is a temporary structure, which is right.
What is this right back here?
That's, that's a, uh, like a patio tiki bar.
Okay, so that's not this.
No, that, the, the, the trailer is right here.
A tree in the way.
But these are not, these, what is indicated on here, it no longer exists.
No, they do. That's, that's the tiki bar.
Oh, but they're not actual, okay.
That's in the backyard.
And that's a deck. Structure, okay.
Yep.
Not actually buildings there.
Correct.
Yes.
The tiki bar is a kind of a building. It's like a shed, I guess.
Is it, is it, is the deck and the tiki bar used currently?
Yes, throughout, throughout the year it is. Typically during the day, um, we, our license is set up so that the, uh, um, the, you know, that area is closed at, uh, nine o'clock.
Okay.
So the trailer, I don't understand, Mr. Lawler is saying that the temporary trailer should be removed.
Correct.
Once, once you get your.
Yeah, once we can.
Correct. Yep.
That's what, that's what he's referring to is.
Yes, yes.
Correct.
No, that's, well, that's part of the, uh, it's already been, I already have that in writing from, um.
Arthur Lawler, the building inspector.
Yeah, Arthur Lawler. So it's, the, the trailer will be gone. That will be removed.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay. Anything else on the board? Alright, so what I'm gonna suggest, um, and certainly other board members can have input on this, but if you took, instead of blowing up this, which I assume is sort of a Google image or something else that you.
Yeah, I think I got it, I think I got it from the town years ago and I found it in some files and I just blew it up and tried to give you guys as much of an idea as possible.
So I would blow up this. Okay, which is the actual.
Okay.
Um, uh, plan for this property with the dimensions on it. And I would use this and put in your parking spaces and other things like that.
Okay.
With the, with the measurements that are, uh, the measurements of the parking, I mean, the parking spots, if they're all gonna be identical or you could mark some as A and some as B and then put, you know, a legend that says what the
You could put like a handicap sign or something on there, right?
You know, B is, or you could even number them all and say, you know, one through fifteen are ten by twenty and sixteen. What I, I mean, figure out the best way to do it, but if you put it on this, that would be more useful for us as well as, um, the building inspector going forward as opposed to this. And I appreciate that this shows, you know, the woods and the, everything else, but I think having it on this.
Cause we have to, you guys have to sign a plan.
Correct.
Okay.
So.
We have to approve a plan.
If you call me tomorrow, I, I believe we have a hundred scale plan to scale.
Okay.
You could use it, you could use it as a template to start with.
Awesome, okay.
And I had given you all the necessary parking requirements.
Yes, yeah, I've got all that paperwork.
It's just that it would give you a better accuracy of what's there.
Okay, so I'll stop in. What's a good time tomorrow morning?
Um, I'm gonna, I have, you, time you're coming in? I can check, it's the old, it's the old hundred scale assessor sheets that are hanging on the wall.
Yeah, no, I'll be in in the morning. I'll, I'll have you point them out to me.
So you can get your square footage that you're gonna have at the end of the day for interior. You can talk to the building inspector about, um, about occupancy. You can kinda get, you can play with those. You can figure that out and then come to us with a sort of final thing that fits within, or either fits within the number or you request a waiver down to some percentage between eighty and a hundred. Um, give us the reason, but, you know, that's, that's what the target is for that.
Okay.
Um, otherwise, I mean, I, from my personal viewpoint, I, I think it, what I was saying to that gentleman, I, I, you know, it doesn't sound like there's any real negative to it.
Right.
It sounds like, if anything, it's gonna be potentially a positive to it, so it strikes me as, you know, a worthwhile endeavor, but. Um, any other comments or questions?
The, uh, location of the dumpster. You were talking about putting it over here. You need to show.
And put, yeah.
Show that on your plan and we'll probably require as a condition and special permit that it be enclosed. So, that location, whatever's gonna work for you.
Yeah, cause we don't have any real spots over here anyway.
No, it's okay. Do we need something a little more specific on the interior modifications or?
Building inspector.
We got there.
Building inspector, not us. I mean, we've got the general sense of what you're doing. As long as it stays within the parameters and we understand the use of it, um, uh, that's fine for our purposes, I think, unless you guys think more is needed, but.
Change to the outside of the building, like for exhaust fans or anything like that now that you're putting kitchen equipment inside?
The, um, we, we were under the assumption that, once we got the approval to move forward with the, actually, the special permit to do the work, that we would have to sit down with the building inspector and the health inspector simultaneously to show them the specific plans for venting and things of that nature and, uh, you know, the tanks for propane, you know, that we, you know, and you have to make sure that they're protected and all that fun stuff. So we figured, once we got the approval to move forward, then we would start drawing up those plans and get the contractors involved with the town, you know, to, uh, to get all that.
The only thing I'd say is that if you're going to, to the extent you can, if you're going to have, you know, propane tanks that are gonna be, take up space or something like that, you may wanna just indicate that and where those would be and how you're gonna enclose it or something like that, you know, to the extent. I, I, if I'm, if you're just gonna, you know, modify the, the structure to allow for an exhaust fan or whatever, you know, exhaust fan, whatever you need to do, that's, that's not our, I don't think that's our purview, but if you're gonna put, um, the propane, um, or something like that that's gonna take up space, um, and maybe something that is properly enclosed or, or dealt with.
Yeah, it was, um.
I would do that now.
We're basically gonna store it where, where it was stored, um, which was, um, in, it's inside the fence line. So it's on the property inside the fence line and we had the, um, I don't know what they're called, the cement poles that were surrounding.
Yeah.
They're concrete ballers.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would put that, cause that's something that I would imagine, you know, public safety would want to know about, you know, it's part of the plan.
Okay.
What's gonna be on the property.
Right. So that's what they're gonna wanna see.
Okay.
Okay, um, you know. Any questions? You can certainly reach out to Allen or the, the building inspector and just run it by them, but, um, that's generally what we're looking for is what's there. Let everybody get a full picture of it so they can make their comments on what it is. Our biggest thing is probably, not our biggest thing, but a big thing is the parking, and so that's what we're definitely gonna have to see more detail on.
Okay.
With this special permit, does that, does that allow additional cooking outside in a tiki area?
No, that's not the part of the application. I think the only application that we've got is to install a kitchen and, and do cooking on the inside of the, of the building.
You know, they used to have a, a small dumpster that was, that was outside. Um, you know, looked like that, uh, food refuse and stuff was, was being put into that dumpster.
Yeah, that's it. I, no, cause, uh, well, I don't know. It's, it's, that's contingent on the, um, health department. That, that, it's all up to them. We have a fifteen hundred gallon grease trap that's in the ground. So, uh, that's where everything gets collected and, and, you know, pulled from. Um, we never had a chance to use it because our permit got pulled. So I'm, I'm assuming that that will suffice.
Having a grease trap.
I, I think that's how it works.
How about, how about takeout for this stuff? Are you guys gonna be doing that?
Well, I mean, we, we'll, we'll offer it. I mean, if, you know, if, obviously.
My concern is about the, the trash that's gonna come out of there. Guy comes out with hamburger, right? He's eating a hamburger, gets in his car, starts driving hamburger out the window.
We live on Keating Hills Road and there's no, there's no burger joint near my house and there's stuff on my lawn.
I don't wanna say.
No, I'm just saying.
Right.
No, I understand.
Obviously, and, and, you know, I mean, you know, I, I, I.
You can't control people.
So we, we would have, you know, I, I can't control people's, you know, ridiculous habits if that's what they're gonna do. I mean, you know, I.
Let me ask you a couple of other, just things, so we can go down the checklist of stuff that you may wanna add on to the plan, uh, or at least consider. Um, lighting. I don't know what kind of lighting is existing or what, if you plan to change it at all, but.
We had, we had lighting installed, um, last year to illuminate, um, from the cameras that we had installed for the, uh, for the, for the tunnel. We have lighting that illuminates, um, looking towards our building and we had lighting installed last year looking away from the building and we have, uh, on the opposite parking lot, same thing. We also have lighting that's up on the telephone pole that looks down on the parking lot. And we, we just, uh, installed new lighting at the front door, um, and the back, uh, deck as well. So that was done, uh, last year, I wanna say around June or July, so it's a little over a year. In addition to the siding that we did and the, and the roof that we, um, put on.
And you have cameras? You said that, the only cameras you have are the ones that deal with the tunnel?
No, and we also have two that overlook the parking lot. Yeah.
Can I, can I, I can access this from my phone?
Okay, any other issues to deal with? Okay, um, it's probably worth, again, it's, you know, those are things that are probably just worth noting or marking in some way, just so that, again, people looking at the plans can get a full scope of what is there and we can incorporate it into our decision as well.
Okay. So we can use, we can use that.
He's got it better.
I believe we have a hundred scale. At least it's to scale. You could use it as a template.
Perfect, and we'll, we'll be down first thing tomorrow morning.
So what we'll do is.
Continue this.
What's that?
You're gonna continue.
Yeah, we're gonna continue this. Um, I will leave it to you a little bit to see, um, our next meeting is the twenty-fifth of September, so two weeks. Our meeting after that is the second. Second. So, you know, I'd prefer to continue it and give you enough time. If you think you're gonna need more time, we can put it on to the second or we can put it on to even a later date, but I, I sort of defer to you as far as.
Well, um.
What your thought process is.
My goal would be to be here on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Um, so I will do whatever I can to get you and if there's an issue, can I reach out and say I need a little more time?
Of course. So just send us a letter and, and we can continue it if needed.
Okay.
You know, um, so we'll put it on for seven thirty? Seven thirty. Alright, do I hear a motion to continue this public hearing to September twenty-fifth at seven thirty?
So moved.
Second?
Second?
All those. Well, now you will have. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Siri?
Oh my god, it's so scary.
Could I just have that?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Pretty soon Dick's not gonna show up. He's just gonna send Siri.
Yeah.
Alright, um, I think that's it for you folks. If you wanna talk to Allen, if you can get that plan and.
Yep, yep, we will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else? We don't? Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make your case.
Second.
Oh, those in favor, Dave.
David.
Second, write that in, in permanent.
Hey, those days are over.